Call this meeting to order at six oh three. Thank you for being here. I will do roll call. Mr. Macia.
President.
Mr. ...
Lefoe.
Lefoe.
Aloha.
Aloha. Oh, excuse me, you're going to Hawaii. Oh, that's right, you're going to Hawaii. Uh, Mr. Vloren.
Here.
Now, Mr. Salinas, we have established the quorum. Dr. Mackey.
Yes, we have a cabinet here this evening, uh, ready to present the budget, Mr. Senator.
Thank you, sir. A couple of announcements first. Don't forget, uh, we have a handout and there's some handouts outside concerning project graduation for Judson High School on Monday, June the second. If you can help with anything, it will be appreciated. Also, on your packet that you received, you will find the parking permits for graduation on Monday, graduation on Tuesday at the Alamo Dome, and for graduation on Thursday for the JLA Adult Education and GED. So, everything is here. Make sure and look at it. Also, there's some brochures that was put. This is the new information brochure for the Judson School District. And, uh, thanks to Mr. Nancy.
Mr. Slain, you seen my picture in there, didn't you?
No, sir. Okay. Do you have any elected officials?
Yes.
Jackie, anybody signed up to read?
Thank you, man.
Discussion items fiscal year 2015 budget discussion.
I love candy.
Dr. Mackey.
Okay, Mr. President, members of the board, if you look at our budget, we've been reviewing it. If you look at it, you see revenue on page four where it has two thousand thirteen, fourteen, two thousand fourteen, fifteen.
Page four, sir.
Page four, uh, you see the net change right there is four million three. And if you go down to, uh, local revenue, you see state revenue. You see, uh, in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, you see we estimate about nine, ninety-eight million, eight sixty-two, with, uh, estimated of utilizing four million, four hundred and nineteen. And, uh, then if you turn to the next page, you will, you will see the total revenue. Uh, revenue, uh, has went up, uh, ten million, eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six point seven percent. And if you look at expenditures, you look at, uh, we went up, uh, from one hundred and twenty million to one hundred and twenty-nine million, uh, seven point thirty-one, uh, percent. Uh, and then you will go down to the bottom line, that is revenue versus expenditures, and you will see that, uh, for fourteen, fifteen, you'll see that we have a deficit of two million, four hundred and seventy-seven, uh, thousand dollars. You know, we started out with four point six, now it's two, uh, two million, four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, and we're still working on, uh, reducing that again.
Okay.
And, uh, and if you see the child nutrition, you, you, it goes the same way. Uh, bottom line, you see that we over, uh, net, uh, one point two, uh, on that. Uh, child nutrition, if you go look at interest and sinking funds, you're, you will see that, uh, that we're over, uh, one point two, uh, forward, but we still have an estimated restricted fund balance of fifteen million, four hundred and six thousand dollars. And then, as everything else, you see is backup data, uh, for page four, five, and six, and seven, and the other, and page, uh, eight, eight through, uh, sixteen, seventeen, eight through seventeen, it is backup data for the first three pages. So, the first three pages is the summary, and then the other is the backup data for all that information. And...
Okay, board members. Okay, I'll, I'll...
Go ahead.
I'll start, uh, mine is a different number because I, I used the bigger one. But it's where it says the proposed twenty fourteen, fifteen budget allocation for campuses and departments.
I don't know what your page is.
On this one. Uh, I noticed that the budget twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, most of them changed for the, uh, elementaries. Uh, some of them were higher, but now they're lower. And I figured that now you have figured out more or less that there's gonna be some budgets left over from those schools, elementary schools, or, or what?
Add another school, so you reduce it when you have another school.
So, everybody's budget went down a little...
Yeah, that's what I noticed, you know. The, uh, the only one at Hardman I noticed
went up to by three thousand forty-five dollars. So, I don't know what that, that meant, Jose.
The way we...
Okay.
It's not their regular enrollment.
Okay.
So, their enrollment.
Because two weeks ago, we got a different number.
For their fourteen, fifteen year?
Uh, yes, sir. I got it right here, sir. That's why I, I checked. Let me check Hardman. Uh, is that the one I'm seeing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Here it is. Okay, we had said that for thirteen, fourteen was seventy-one thousand. And now it went down to sixty-five, seven, seventy-two, which means the, uh, possibly the number of students. Is that correct? We had seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two, and the fourteen, fifteen, we had sixty-eight thousand, eight seventeen. But now, we reduced the budget twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, and we have the new budget to sixty-eight thousand. So, the new budget didn't change.
Right, the new budget wouldn't change.
But where did these three thousand forty-five come from?
If there was an adjustment made to last school year, uh, to the current school year right now?
See, okay, okay, yes. Yeah, no, that one was the same.
It's the same amount.
Yes, okay, that one was the same.
Was it Hardman?
Yeah.
Yeah.
See, how come it was at seventy-one here?
Yeah, that's what I mean.
See, that's at seventy-one.
And this is sixteen.
And then here it's sixty-five.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Yeah.
Hi, ma'am, how are you?
See what I'm saying?
Miss, record reflect that Miss Ayder has joined us.
I do see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Well, that's why I put little red dots, because it seems like all of them changed. Look at Coronado, had forty-six, eighty. Coronado, forty-one, seventy.
Well, I'm, I'm, yeah, this budget, the budget side.
Right. Well, I marked it, that's why...
You asked me a good question. I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to look. The fourteen, fifteen is the same. The thirteen, fourteen, that changed a little bit.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, so I'll, I'll, let me check and see.
Seem like that should've stayed the same.
It should've.
Yeah.
Yeah, because on these, the same thing.
It didn't change very much.
No, because I went, I went one by one.
Right.
Okay? Where I had made changes, I mean, where I had questioned the last time, and I just said, and now when you said possibly student enrollment, which makes sense.
Well, it would've been for fourteen, fifteen now.
Yeah, it would've been fourteen, fifteen. This one shouldn't have changed.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go back and check that, see why that's different.
Oh, that's... No, no, no problem, sir. We'll just check it on that. Okay, if we go down to where it says, uh, Mr. Gonzalez, starting with eight oh one, I don't know what kind of changes...
Page nine.
Were made, yeah, page nine.
I know it, no, there's not.
Director of People's Services. If you look, I mean, these are good numbers. For example, the textbook administrator, thirteen, fourteen, nineteen, nine fifty, and the twenty fourteen, fifteen went down to fifty-three hundred, a difference of fourteen thousand six hundred and fifty. But that's not what we had the last time.
No, we have, uh, the, the numbers for this school year, fourteen, fifteen, since the last version we gave you.
Yes.
We have been working on those, that's...
Yes, oh, okay, but that's, that's...
For textbooks, that's, uh, quite a, quite a difference. Don't, don't lie to them, because the first blush they gave us.
No, no.
We're gonna go back and work with all the departments, get them down to what we really think. And that's why you're seeing some of those numbers that are changed. So, the report that we sent you that dated at the very top, five fourteen, twenty fourteen?
Yeah.
That's the most current report that, as a, you know, that we, that's where we are right now, the budget negotiation with all the departments.
What about the ones with five twenty-nine? You said five fourteen. Thank you, Senator.
No, right here.
So, up here in the corner, here's...
The, uh...
Yeah, mine says five twenty-two.
No, but look, make this one.
There's one on eight thirteen, records retention also went from thirty-two, two hundred.
Well, that section of it's five fourteen.
Yeah, okay.
All that.
Uh, retention, record, records retention.
Went up to eighteen.
Uh, right, it went up by eighteen thousand one hundred, and I understand the records have to be destroyed or something.
Does that cost them more to store?
Same side.
Same side, costs them more to store records. We have to store all the records.
Okay.
Yeah.
Data research, uh, I guess instructional specialist. That one went down by thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-six dollars, almost thirty-eight thousand dollars. Do you see that one on eight thirty-six?
Yeah, that was, that was a pretty much of it.
Well, in house bill five, we can only get two CAs down with one fifty-four.
Correct.
You saw the printing, all of those records like Austin.
Yes, ma'am.
Here it's one.
Okay, the truancy monitoring, no, that, that did not change. That remained the same.
See, on the records retention, Dr. Mackey, is that, are we keeping paper copies and everything, or are we putting it on disk?
Yes, paper copies, and storing them.
They're both.
We do both?
Why are we doing both? Isn't it just...
And joking, this is the area, but a lot of the older information, some information is still paper copies, things that are really, a lot of, a lot of, they're permanent records, but we have...
But you can't scan them?
Like, we've been scanning a lot of the newer things. I guess, do you want your children doing that?
Well, well, wouldn't it be start, uh, smart to start taking a year at a time of the older ones and scanning those, and then...
We are, we've been paying extra money in the summer for people to do it.
Oh, okay.
But we still have some, uh, retention. This year's, yeah, since Judson started?
Joel.
Then we reduce the size, we're still under the, uh, a cost for those records that we pay that say, uh, a lot of, a lot of that cost also is special debt costs. And we don't use, uh, we don't use special debt funding to pay for those costs.
Okay.
Joel, I know there's, unless things changed, uh, what is the one that you have to hold them for five years, and after that, then you can destroy them? Except the transcripts or something like that?
That's, that's transcript, that's super.
We can still, we can destroy transcripts after five years?
Well, we move those over into the, the disk that Mr. Boras...
Oh, okay.
And then we can destroy the, uh, certain, there, there are certain files that we can destroy according to the, uh, textbook, uh, textbook record methods. So, uh, it depends on what that, what that record is. I can list or list...
No, sir, I, I do not need that.
You can never not have that.
Thank, thank you very much.
It's a permanent record, 'cause I got mine the other day.
And, uh, if we go to...
You got it, you got it.
If we go to seven...
They're never old.
The one that, uh, we had for maintenance, seven forty, I believe, it shows here, Executive Director of Operations. Oh, no. No, no, no. Uh, Building and Grounds Maintenance. The last time, uh, we had one point five million, but now it went down, uh, oh my God, it went down quite a bit.
All of those, um...
We had new schools.
I'm sorry?
All those projects that we had put up, we said, we're putting them on, we're gonna put in the maintenance piece of property, uh, especially the, uh, flooring project, all the asphalt, all the concrete, all those projects we had, I mean, we could, you can like that with all the stuff.
So, what do you plan to do?
But we need it, why do we take it out?
Yeah, what do you...
Four million, four million dollars over?
Well, I understand, but I'm pretty sure you've got to have some priorities. Some roofs, why do we wanna wait till they start leaking and everything? We have to budget something. We'll come up with something. Uh, you know, I, I know I said...
I took it out, it was made.
Yeah, yes, sir, because you said, uh, that was just things that they need, but especially on the roofing or things like that. If we need them, we better...
Is there a schedule?
We, we're doing one with Tasby right now.
Oh, okay, okay.
And we, we, once we get all this done, Tasby's working with us on this, and we're gonna have a whole thing ready for you all, through all the roofing, the air conditions and everything. That we're, we're gonna have that ready. I didn't wanna make up lists, I wanna get that done, so y'all know everything by schedule for the next, next three to five to seven years. You'll have it all down. So, that's what I'm putting together right now.
Yes, okay.
So, essentially then, those needs will be addressed, or just be addressed in a, in a time, time frame?
Yes, yes.
That way, we're not getting hit, I guess, all at once on the budget?
That's correct, that's correct. Tasby, Tasby, was it Tasbo or Tasby? Tasby's working with us, okay.
And is it something as well that we might just be able to put under a bond proposal when we go to our next one?
Well, um, when I present that to you, y'all can determine what y'all wanna do in M and O, and what you wanna do in bond, but we'll have it together, and then we can go over it and, and present that to you all. Let us, let us finish putting all this together, because I asked him to go to Tasby to put this together, because they, they do this for a living, and they could help us get this on.
Are we gonna get at least some emergency projects that we need to get done over the summer?
Um, I, I think, I think we are, 'cause, you know, what we're gonna do, um, what we need to do is, like, we have some, well, we have some asphalt.
We're doing that asphalt at, um, at Franz.
At Franz.
And we've got that flooring project at Crestview.
Crestview.
Internet, uh, where it's all being, so we bring that up June ninth.
June, yeah, June the ninth. We, there's some things that we're gonna bring up, and then we got an asphalt problem at Converse, there's a big old hole there, that I noticed that we, we're gonna be, we're gonna, we, we'll have a list of little things that we need to get done on the June ninth, over the summer.
Is there something in there?
So, we wanna, we wanna go in the budget, this year's budget, we wanna go in this year's, not next year's budget, this year's budget to do that.
Is there something in there for the stadium area?
What stadium?
Budley's.
What, what Budley?
The parking lot out there.
Oh, you mean the butt holes?
No, we didn't, we've been working on that stadium, maybe nearly every year, for asphalt.
Yeah, and it's still...
I know it.
We have to raise the cost of tickets.
But it's not every day.
That's a good idea.
But it's not an everyday deal at the stadium, but the campuses are every day, so this is top priority. The campus is more so than the stadium.
Okay, I, I think, I think that was it for me, Dr. Mackey. Any other board member? Yes, sir?
Um, I did talk with Mr. Elizondo today, um, about providing us an actual column for our, for our budget review, so we can kinda take a look at what the actual expenditures have been in terms of what the budget item was for twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. So, that'll help us going forward to also look at what we've spent or not spent.
We see that every month.
Uh, not broken down like this, I mean, not, not in this, this format, which is what we're doing. We're doing budget, uh, discussions. So, this format and having the actuals will be beneficial for us to look at. Uh, I wanted to just make sure what we're spending and what we're not.
You mean on the same number line?
Yep, yep. So, uh, my, my vision is that eighteen thirteen, record retention, budget thirty-two thousand two hundred, actual expense, uh, year-to-date, which would be the snapshot. Uh, that'll give us an understanding of what's still sitting in, in the unspent column, if you will. And there's probably rationale. I know that Mr. Elizondo did mention some of these expenditures would happen during the summer, and so that's expected.
That's why they were budgeted.
Yeah.
I just, I just wanna know, are you gonna do like they do in the military?
How's that?
If they didn't spend it, you're gonna take it with you.
Oh, no, I wanna know. Hey, we didn't expend it, we wanna know why.
So, I go back to the general function. It's already done.
I remember we was the rush, we spend the money.
Then you can put it back in.
Right.
Yeah, and that'll, that'll help, because obviously if we, we show some money there, we can reallocate or decide what to do with it possibly. I don't expect to see a lot of dollars. We're pretty good about spending our money, but, uh, there's some entrances where there, there may be some latitude. So, that'll just help us in our decision. So, I think Mr. Elizondo, if he, if he can get that to us, to the board as soon as he can get that completed. Um, but I do have some expensive questions.
Before you go to the next thought?
Yeah.
So, say, for example, if there is some money, say, in departments that wasn't spent, and it's not planned, uh, then can some of that money be reallocated, the way we do transfers, to take care of some of the maintenance needs?
That's what we use it for. That's what our, that's what our summer projects, and summer touched out development, maintenance repairs, we do it every year. We hire extra personnel to do painting, we, we do all of that stuff, we utilize that money for all of that stuff. We come back and do a budget amendment, and we get that stuff done.
That's, yeah, that's where it's almost seem seamless sometimes, so, but it'll be good for the, the board to be aware of that as well, to help in some of that direction. Uh, but I do, again, I do have some questions, uh, and I do appreciate the, uh, additional scheduled meeting for curriculum. I, I think I mentioned that to Ms. Robinson, that I'd wanna have a little more intensive conversation with the board, and what some of these initiatives could be for our college and career readiness efforts. Um, so, but I will tackle some of my curriculum questions, Ms. Robinson, if you don't mind, just to, I, I think I owe you, uh, communication about specifics, but at least maybe in this conversation, I can give you some of the specifics from, from what I, I'd like. Um, I did notice from our May first meeting to the current budget, uh, we've, we actually looked at a lot of cuts, um, across the board. Um, and so, uh, for example, eight fifteen...
Is that a code number, sir?
Yes, it's location code eight fifteen, which is the language arts curriculum.
Correct.
For elementary, middle, and high school. And of course, they've, they've been cut, um, by eight thousand, ten thousand, ten thousand. Um, but I noticed that across the board, with, it go into eighteen sixteen, with the math, math, math curriculum specialist?
You mean eight sixteen?
Yeah, eight sixteen, eight one six, being cut by fourteen, fifteen, almost twelve thousand. So, these, these cuts just concerns me, and I wanted to kinda at least ask right off what the, the recommendation was in terms of making a recommendation to reduce these budgets.
Excellent. We looked at all other alternative sources we could pull from our cap two and type one, because we were, we were applying one, one initially on the budget, without personnel and just stuff. And so, we went back and said, where else maybe could we fund some of this? Um, so where we could, then we reduced those budgets in this department a little bit.
Okay. Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Yeah, related to that directly. So, um, we don't have to be concerned, say, when we look at, uh, where he was at, and I went on down to eight twenty-two, um, a reduction of thirty-four thousand in science. We don't need to be concerned that any of our science curriculum needs are going to be short, we're just...
Not the issue. We're getting a brand-new textbook adoption and the stuff that comes with it.
Okay.
And that comes out of YM, so, I mean, we didn't kind of believe it, it's true. We clearly need it. I mean, we never have enough money, but where we could, remember from somewhere else we could.
Is there gonna be a lack of, uh, of what the kids are getting because of this cut?
No.
And I guess that's where I'm going with as well. Uh, it just was a huge cut in terms of what was being recommended. Um, actually, even over three years, I took the two twen- two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen numbers, and, um, I, it was just...
And just so you know, every year when our poverty levels go up, we've got more finance. See what I mean? So, we've kind of, we've been able to shift around by this one.
And later on, we'll talk about that on our agenda, I think, talk about titling a little more, add a little more length. Um, I wanted to also bring up too, um, I was really impressed and a little disappointed, but impressed with Northside, uh, this past week. I believe Northside ISP is going to pay for every junior's SAT testing this next year. And, uh, that's a huge commitment to say, we want you to take that test. It's something that I think this district can do and should do. Uh, the natural progression of the Princeton Review, or the SAT readiness that we're trying to incorporate, would target juniors next. I just wanted to recap again, if this next year, our target was not only seniors, but our junior, uh, class members as well, post Wagner and Judson.
Right now, we're giving them PSAT, and then we're giving SATs for every...
Are we going to open up, then, this Princeton Review to our juniors?
Yes, sir. And we did this year, and we didn't. So, it was the first round of people. Um, Judson High School can put some soft words in that were in the parents classes. We'll have space again, a little bit, for, we have a really, a good interest.
My rough figures, um, doing the math, were paying for every junior's SAT, uh, here at Judson was, I think, ten thousand or something like that, which is not a great deal of money at end-of-date. But what are, what are your thoughts?
Well, you know that, um, free reduced lunch...
I realize that. We actually have waivers.
So, even when you took that into consideration, you still need ten thousand?
Even with the waivers, that's what I think is the ballpark, with the waivers being included. If you have two hundred waivers at Judson, two hundred waivers at Wagner, there may be more, but if you take the class, we should be able to offer that. And again, the incentive is that we want all of our kids to take the SAT and start thinking about that as a, as a career and college readiness.
The people at Northside are really very collaborative with us, so let me make a call and see how, what they're doing with PSAT. My, I'm not, I can ring the responsibility need, but more detail for this.
That's, that's perfect.
Because I'd really like to do a little research, because we don't wanna overtest either, and that would be why it is.
Well...
Because the PSAT, they look at for other things. For instance, the new college readiness class that we must offer at, at, um, this, this junior, I'm sorry, senior year. We have to start with PSAT data first. It's what Northside's doing, it's what everybody's doing. So, I kinda wanna know how they're testing both, to everybody on top at EOC and on the thing. So, I kinda, let me just research, I'll bring my thoughts on it after I'm looking to that, if you don't mind.
My, uh, and I don't mind. My opinion on that would be that they do not have a Princeton Review format. They're probably just doing test, PSAT. But offering to pay for all of their juniors' tests is, um, I think, a psychological motivation to take the test and study for it. We're, we have an opportunity to take it one-up by already having an existing program and really impacting and sending that message out there, which, uh, we've talked a great deal about that. We wanna kinda set the bar, we wanna raise that. So, I'm, I'm very open to, to additional suggestions. Uh, I did notice, of course, that we did have an increase in our budget for it, because I think you've made a commitment to Princeton Review. And, um, and just for the record, Ms. Robinson, I'm not, I'm not a big fan of Princeton Review. I don't know the process. I just wanted a process. I think the administration adopted Princeton Review as that, uh, that method to provide SAT prep. But it can be anything, as long as that's what's happening at end-of-date.
What was the increase?
Um, and the, uh, Princeton Review to spend an additional hundred and four thousand dollars on that program.
We did. And here's what happened to we...
Sure.
All right, the last school year, when we were looking at this program, what we were gonna do was, we were gonna buy all the materials, uh, from Princeton Review for our new class. And we were gonna hire four staffmen. So, it was gonna cost us two hundred thousand dollars. We budgeted two hundred thousand dollars for the four staffmen, two thousand dollars of these classes.
Didn't show.
Super high, right, didn't show on this side, 'cause that's in the sound, that's in the payroll side, 'cause they're gonna be courting. Then, we budgeted a hundred thousand dollars for the actual stuff. So, in all in all, we have budgeted three hundred thousand dollars for Princeton.
Which I remember that, I mean, I'm...
Once we started having discussions with them and looking for, who are we gonna hire this program, we found it more economical, better for school districts to say, hey, Princeton Review has the T-iron features that we can hire, uh, as consultants, with physicality, they can buy all that from them. In doing that, that program, this current school year, cost us two hundred thousand dollars total, instead of three hundred thousand dollars, which is what we paid for it. So, the, the matching in here is really the same cost as what we paid for the current year, for next year.
That's because it was tied up in personnel?
That's exactly right.
Okay, all right.
Let me make a point here that you brought up. You said Northside is paying for all their juniors.
That's correct.
Okay, and I think we are doing the same thing, Nancy?
Well, here's, here's what I would wanna ask Northside. If the kids are just taking it on their own, you know what I mean, on a Saturday, and we'll pay for it, that's different than, we're doing the SAT day program, which means we will do it during the day for all of our kids. So, we don't have to, you know, kids that, um, are in struggling situations don't always sign up and go drive themselves somewhere.
Okay, well, I'm...
I would need to clear, get clarification from Northside, which they're...
And, and I'm all for the, we'll pay. I am not for telling every junior, you are gonna take this test. That, I, I will not be, I will not be for that. Why are we forcing juniors, you better take this test? Maybe they don't wanna take it, but if it's available and they wanna take it, we'll pay for it. But I will not say, we're gonna force it on you, another test.
That's where I really...
They, they have another test, that we don't have to force another one, say, you will take this. But as far as the funding, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
I disagree, I disagree with you a little bit, not like we're gonna take 'em by the hair and sit 'em down and say, you're gonna take this test. However, however, and I don't mind using my, my child.
No, that's fine.
My child graduated last year. I said, you need to take the SAT test. I scheduled the SAT test. He didn't feel he needed to take the SAT test. So then when he got offered a scholarship in Dallas, guess what? They couldn't give it to him because he didn't take the SAT test. So children, and as I've gotten older, I've gotten more lax, my other kids, I made them take it. You know, baby acts, like, okay, fine, you know. But our kids in high school do not know what they need. And we have to strongly encourage them. In Texas, the SAT is the predominant standard, not the ACT. And even the kids that can have it for free, they're not taking the test. So, yeah, there's a lot of tests, but they need to be encouraged to take the test.
Well, right now, our junior year, we're giving PSAT. The new house bill five classes that we have to offer. You have to start with your PSAT readiness score to get the first tier of kids, and then you bring EOC passage. There's a step process to determine which kids we must offer that class to, starting with PSAT. Um, I don't want to put the money in yet tonight until I research, what is the direction?
All right, we just, we just...
No, no, that's fine, but I, I just wanted to, to let you know.
Your opinion and...
And if the students are given all that information, how it's gonna help them, chances are, yes, they're gonna take it. But to tell them, you will take it, that, that I will not, I won't go that way.
One of the things that will be different next year is, yes, we have Princeton Review, and there are some kids, and I'll use my kids, I had one, that would have done better in a class with a teacher, you know, that's just her learning style.
Yeah.
But with SAT day program that we've already purchased now, um, they will, every kid sixth grade through twelfth grade can get free online SAT prep. So my oldest son would have preferred, just give me a computer and leave me alone, and let me get online and do it. So we'll have two different venues for kids to prep next year.
Okay.
The, the thing is, it has to, you know, the opportunity is there for all of them to take it. Now, if we educate them and saying, this is why you need it, you know, scholarships or whatever.
Yes.
Then it's up to them whether they're going to take it or not. But then we can, on, on the other side, say, we're gonna grade the superintendent down because we didn't get a hundred percent. We can't do that.
No, no.
Well, no, no, but, but what it's gonna come down to is, and we know we want them all to take it, but they're not going to. You can't make them drink the Kool-Aid.
Yeah.
You know, you, you just have to make it available for them.
Well, and, and that's, that's a good segue.
And that's what you want.
That's what I want. Yeah, there's absolutely no mandate to take them.
Now, now the, you know, educating them a little bit more, saying, this is why you need it, and this is what, what will help you, you may get better results.
And then not having to pay for it.
Yeah.
You know, saying that it's available to you, besides the people that are free, we do such.
Right, the waivers would already be included in that. But a, a lot of times, like you would hear, parents are just unaware. And so if we tell them off the bat, hey, your child is registered at Judson, a junior, all are able to take the SAT free. We have this great SAT day program, want you to become part of it, we have this great Princeton Review. We already have some things that will help move things along. Uh, I'd like us to really maximize that, that program this year, with this first year being a learning curve. Uh, but I just think, again, that would send a very powerful message. And, uh, but I did notice, again, that, um, and your person math i- is going up a little bit. And I'm, I'm gonna target math, if you could identify that as a, as a, as a, an issue. So I want to make sure that we're doing it.
What number, sir?
It's actually, uh, nine nine nine.
Oh, nine nine nine?
Yeah, that's the number.
Page eleven, about three quarters of the way down.
Oh, okay, okay.
We added a school.
You added a school?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And you're paying over kids.
So then, and I was, I was wondering if it was just that we were going to, we've, we've identified a, a method in which to, uh, put more funding towards. Remember, we talked about what do we need to fund that's working? If there's something that's really working, are we funding it so that we can get better results? But that increase is a result of the school debt.
Yes.
Are we, as a, the math intervention, where are we starting that at?
At kindergarten.
At kindergarten, okay.
I'm not gonna say pre-k's not, but I can speak, I know for sure the R-Chat process is starting in kindergarten. And we have multiple products on here, the stride, I'm just wondering.
It's not the stride, I'm just wondering. Math intervention, Princeton stride, second to the left.
Second to the left, yeah.
So the math intervention, looking for the one stride?
Two thirty-five.
Yes. So let me kind of explain to you, for elementary, all the math takes are taken.
Mm-hmm.
So it's almost like a clean playing field for the entire state, as we've talked about. There's gonna have to be tons of development, uh, which we're planning for. Uh, they've done a really good job sitting and making a strategic plan for that. Um, the I, the first in math, what that is, is, is a basic computation, if you can't add, if you can't multiply. That's a piece that is that readiness. Um, because the way the teacs are written, you're not spending a lot of time anymore going, times three is, you know, nine. So that's this product, and the kids compete, the superintendent himself, actually every month awards to the kids that have won the most stars. And I mean, it's, it's very competitive. They announce the top ten principals, and they get a big trophy that they get to keep for that month. And then at the next principal's meeting, they announce the school that have won. And then Dr. Mackey drives and actually awards a plaque to all the kids who had the most points. That's a specific product to help those kids with automaticity of math. Stride Academy is going to be what we use for math intervention. And quite frankly, the state, um, with ICE Station came out real quick with a reading intervention, but they, they didn't come out as quickly with the math. This time, we have principals, Ms. Brady, put the committee together, we have principals, we have teachers. Everybody looked at the available products, and this is the one that they chose. And so this will be the intervention screen, and there's resources on there to help them remediate. So that's the purpose of the Stride Academy, and it will be new next year for us.
Their same teachers will be doing it?
Uh, well, it depends if it's tier two or tier four, um, that's working with it, but yeah. Like ICE Station, if we're going through screening, it's, they will monitor kids growth or not when it comes to reading. Um, and then, of course, the textbooks and everything for, with the new teacs. So there's multiple layers of thinking on that.
Okay, uh, I just, we'll, we'll get right back to you, Ms. Robinson, real quick question from Ms. Alexander. The code nine nine nine, is that a, just a generic code?
It is.
Is that...
Also expensive, we want to just find out, because we were always concerned about adding it to somebody's budget. And in the following year, forgetting to clear that budget, and then the person comes back with their request, and we overlook it. And this will be kind of separated, and we know that, hey, these are maybe one-time things, they may be occur a few years, but they're not gonna be on board forever.
And that's why I wondered, if, if there's an expectation, there's not a, a long, or, long-term item?
No, some are long-term, like the Greek and Latin.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, that's a good question, I want to ask it after I'm finished with this Robinson. Don't forget that, write that down.
Doesn't sound good.
No, no, not in a negative way at all, I appreciate, uh, the input. Um, one thing that did, I wanted, I think Spring Board, if you can explain again what Spring Board is. My vision is that it was a middle school initiative, right?
It is.
Okay.
But they also have a high school.
Okay.
And one of the things Northeast did in one of their clusters, when they got their scores out, um, yes, thank you, Ms. Brady. She was letting us know the Stride Academy goes with the K- eight new teacs.
Okay.
So just so you know, they're aligned to the new teacs.
Okay, good.
Thank you for that input. Um, the Spring Board, last year, in several of the Northeast schools, they, there's a high school version, and they put it in, in a couple of their lower schools, to see if that college align, the college board actual point, rather than the one the district wrote, would help them in that area. So this year Wagner also worked with that, um, at ninth, was it ninth grade, yeah, ninth grade on.
Well, and I was, I'm under the impression that Spring Board was a, a good thing for our district. Uh, I did notice that there's a decrease in, of twenty thousand in recommended for this budget cycle, so we're not going to invest any more funding in Spring Board?
Because they're redoing pieces of it, the, the price came down.
Okay, so we're getting a better buy then?
Yes. As more schools buy stuff, the prices tend to...
Mm-hmm. And, so every middle school then is using Spring Board, or which middle schools are you doing?
I, I, I want to say all of them, let me confirm, okay? That's where we purchased it for, I think everybody knows in class, Ms. Brady, if you don't... Off, yes, off.
Okay. There, there were five items, um, on the nine 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 code that I couldn't find in the newer version, uh, our new report. Um, under, you, Ms. Robinson?
Yeah.
Uh, universal screen, second graders, ITBS. It was for thirty-six thousand in our, uh, May first one, but I couldn't find it here.
It's the same thing, is it PK, is it the same thing as the PK universal screen?
Uh-huh.
It's a different one?
Yeah. So, again...
ITBS is the, the norm reference, um, national test that we're gonna give to secondary. Because right now, they don't, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, and you had, when you made your initial recommendation, thirty-six thousand was allocated for it, but I, I just couldn't find it.
It's the number?
It's, so it's a nine nine nine, so it's a generic one, and there's...
You're saying it's now missing on the...
Yeah, it's not.
I can tell you why.
Why?
We went back and we put, we put that back in the actual person's budget.
And who was the actual person?
There was several things, it's Ms. Marito's budget?
Marito's.
Marito, she's our advanced academician. Some of the things that were on nine nine nine, we, we attempted to lower the budget, is if you want this bad enough, then you need to put it in your budget. And that's what some of them did.
Okay.
You know, just so you know, when we start this process over here, everybody asks for everything they can possibly want.
Of course, that's what we do.
And we just can't do everything, and I wish we could, but we can't. And so what we did is we went back and said, you're gonna have to prioritize, and a few of those items will move back to the specialist or the coordinator's budget.
And so would that be the same then, 'cause I'll ask you the five of them that are missing?
Sure.
The support for the AP testing and ID?
Yes, yes.
That was also...
Move back to her budget.
That's my breakthrough.
Okay, so it's, both of them fell back underneath her budget?
Yes, sir.
And then the other ones are the high schools drum line, color guard uniforms, and choir tux and dress that were also on your budget for the last year. They fell under...
You wanna speak to that?
Uh, the, the drum line thing is, is something that we're looking at, that's really part of the management strategy that we're pushing, that we have. Um, the color guard uniforms and the, the tux and dress and stuff for a budget, have they...
They've been eliminated?
Here's what we're looking at for next year, what we have to do, aren't we? Um, is that when we started elementary, trying to, uh, have some equity going across the board, we withheld three dollars per elementary and then allocated it once it turned a plan. So they got their money back, but we were able to actually make sure we weren't buying a piano gear, and nobody else got that, and these people got that. We're gonna need to do that in a small way at the high schools as well, because they're getting the budget money, you can't add any more of it here. You know what I mean? And, but, um, that's something we're looking at next year.
No, I think our grant, our grant writers, um, some outside funds, they need to look at the extracurricular activities and look at trying to raise some money from companies, our business groups, but, um, I, I, I'm in agreement with not doing that this year.
What we...
If we don't have it, that's an extra thing that we just can't be doing.
And the principals have the money, so if they really want it, they can...
They can use their money.
What year are we in in our uniforms?
Uh, well, Wagner is, uh, we're starting year two, or, uh, Judson, we're starting year three.
Okay.
And it's normally five years?
Mm-hmm.
Seven.
Seven?
Oh, seven, okay.
But they just got...
You don't have to worry about it. Well, Ms. Robinson, uh, there was also something on the twenty-twelve budget that had, uh, books for elementary literacy rooms. But in this year, it says books for high school literacy room.
Exactly.
And, uh, so that confused me a little bit, but the next thing is a, that concerned me was that, um, it went down from one hundred and seventy thousand in, in last year's budget, or this year's, let me say, this year's budget. But the recommendation is to reduce it to fifty thousand dollars, which is pretty significant.
Which one went down, the elementary one?
No, it's now it's a high school issue, so two questions. Did it switch from elementary to high school?
Yes, sir, because what we're trying to do, we were trying to give them a literacy, principals also have some money for that. Um, but we, they needed some help initially. The elementary is because by the time you buy for that many of them, it does come out to more than the two high school bookrooms. The high schools had some novel sets, lots of them, so when we redo the rooms to where they're by genres, and they need the new teacs, we needed to supplement, they didn't have enough of the genres like we did at elementary. We actually started at middle, if you'll recall, we did the middle school bookrooms first, and then we went to elementary, now we're going to high school.
Okay, and so fifty thousand is enough to take care of that?
Along with other money, we're able to supplement.
Wait, don't leave the library, you threw there?
That's not library.
I mean, the book.
I was gonna move on, if you have a quick question.
I have a quick question. Okay, so just to be clear, we have to tour, uh, some of the literacy rooms.
Yes.
So I understand it.
Yes.
So did we finish what we needed to do at elementary, not just did we move on?
Well...
Are they still needing some more?
In my opinion, there's three schools that really did, uh, probably all of them could use a little every year. You can also put a little bit in, when I was a principal, we had an expense year one, and then I put eleven thousand a year off my budget in special one. Um, so that it, we, we could keep up, you know what I mean, you could keep adding. Some things drop off, some get stripped over time, you know, so we had a replacement issue off the campus budget. Um, we have three elementaries though, the two that were doing SFA, and, um, Tandaway, when I walked their bookroom, is not sufficient. And I don't know why, you know, they have less, but they do whatever it is. And so I budgeted a little bit in mind to help supplement that.
Okay, I was gonna say, if, um, you could kind of keep that in mind, um, Dr. Mackey, um, 'cause I did tour those in, in...
Mm-hmm, and now the high school needs those. We're, because it went from a very different teac- to this teac, and it is all non-profit, so if they don't have all the genres represented.
The, the last part of that, though, is, so when we open the new school, you know, they get that new school money. Um, they're gonna get enough money at Copperfield to get enough books for their literacy room to be on par with the others? Or do we have to take away books like we take away teachers and move them around?
No, no need. And let me tell you what happened, she was originally given Roland Meadows budget, this is what Roland Meadows spent on things, to give her a working place. But as you pointed out in that budget, she was a very, very smart principal. And she came and she said, that was three years ago, the teacs were different, the test was different, this isn't enough to cover the genres. And so, um, Mr. Persner, because there was money, though I understand, did you help her out with that? Yes, so they gave her a little more so that it wouldn't be on par, and we wouldn't be starting in a deficit.
Okay, thank you.
Good question.
Um, I did notice on college and career class, it's also code nine nine nine, there was eighty thousand that was spent this year. Um, it's the NO system, I imagine?
The NO system.
And, and so that has been reduced by fifty-five thousand, um, is that just not a program that's working, or is it...
They went from a lot of paper things they had to buy every year to a lot of this online.
So it's, it's online?
Yeah.
And what is it exactly?
That's our Greek and Latin groups that they use.
Okay, all right. Uh, and then the Avid, again, I, I applaud the, the rebirth of that program, sixth grade. You'll, you'll be able to leave good notes, uh, on how to manage the Avid, I know that we talked about how the Avid is not...
And if we do, we'd like to see it move up each year, but we're gonna start reasonable, given the budget, and start with sixth grade and try and do it very...
Is that all sixth graders?
Yes.
Okay, and what does the, the cohort look like, that is, is it gonna be twenty from each school, thirty six?
No, 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 it's every, and el- middle school model's a little different, Ms. Brady, please speak out, she's the one that's been researching, would you like to, address it?
We are trying to, uh, in the way, Dr. Howell, it's starting with sixth grade, our department, we're just trying to... And basically what we do is we provide the Avid strategy during the English class, so that every sixth grade student will get that type of, um, intervention that can help them better organize and... Now, we can do up to seventh and eighth grade, it's something I could consider, that's gonna have to be, uh...
Mostly, that's where it's at?
Yes, so this involves, um, a sixth grade identified teachers, English one, our English teachers are using their Avids, and, uh, this is where we go.
Cool.
We will also do SBA with these, and monitoring, and we just felt that, when I looked at Northside's program, having a class bound with English, why is it just perfect?
So everything gets as far as...
Well, that is, that's the... Thank you, Ms. Brady.
And then it gets more narrowed as you move up, if you move into high school. I think that would, if that's the direction the district goes down the road, I think it'll be more successful than it started here, and that's not how, you know what I mean? Most people start in sixth and move on.
And, uh, I'll probably still want, um, a summary statement on Trevor, Trevor, uh...
Roman, Roman?
Yeah, on the anti-bullying, to see what that return has been, if that's been a successful program. I know it's recommended again, but, um, just for my own thought on that, what it's looking like for kids at elementary.
I have a question about how you expect to evaluate that.
Well, that, that question was asked when I brought up the understanding, how we can evaluate it, so...
So would you like that, that the gym one?
Yeah, yeah, that would be great. If, if we can evaluate, at least we come forward and say, hey, look, we know it's making a difference, it's just hard to quantify.
And it's not our own piece, so let me kind of show you everything we're doing.
Well, and if, if you're gonna show us what you're doing, if we're gonna talk about evaluating it, I'd like to see how many reports we have. Because, um, just today, when I was at the VA, this lady comes up to me and says, Mr. Derry on the board, my granddaughter's being bullied and y'all, y'all aren't doing anything. So I want to know, uh, other than the fact that we have these programs, how many kids are reporting it? And, you know, what's the frequency of the report, are they coming back? This lady says, this has been going on from middle school, my daughter's a freshman, and we've never done anything. So, um...
No, so, a couple of things, Ms. Derry, you know, I, I've heard that story time and time again. So today, so Tuesday, I had a parent come in, talk about her son being bullied, mom and dad came in. Guess what, I went out there and interviewed, got the son myself today, son has never told anyone, and the son wasn't going to class. The son got caught with drugs, the son's been skipping school, all of that transpired. So it, so I had to call the parent back and explain that to the son.
Tell him the rest of the story.
Rest of the story.
Yeah.
So there's always, when people say that, there's always two sides of the story. So the principal never said, well, we don't, I had him running around for an hour trying to find a kid that was not in class. At first period this morning, I stayed over there until I found that kid. 'Cause I wanted to report back to that parent, and the parent thanked me, 'cause now he got the truth of it. 'Cause the kid would go home and say anything, and it was not bullying going on in the building.
That's why he wasn't going to play.
It was in the athletic period, when they were going through inside drills, and they were hitting this kid, and the kid said he didn't want to play football again. were hitting this kid, and the kid said he didn't wanna play football again. So he gives that. So I'm just telling you. Now, some, that, I'm not saying, there is some, because I met with about, how many, how many I met with today, elementary kids?
Two from every school.
Two from every elementary school this morning. And I asked them about bullying and about things that are going on. One school, really, one school came up. The rest of the kids said, all you have to do is follow what you've been taught, what to do and all of that. And they take care of it. But the one school said, I'm gonna deal with that.
Okay.
I'm gonna deal with it. One school. And I took notes of, listened to all the kids today.
I'll share with you later the school the parent was from.
Yeah, I bet you the school I'm thinking about too, because it kept coming up. It kept coming up.
Eventually, the kids will tell.
And the kids tell the truth. They'll tell you the truth. They were excited about telling me the truth. One of them even wrote me a letter today. Said, please, please talk to the school board about the dress code. This is what she wanted to wear.
She drew a picture.
She drew a picture of it.
Absolutely.
Was it bottom down?
Mr. Mcdill, if you mind, if I recap, to make sure I have it.
Sure.
So for June twelve, you'd like an evaluation report of our opinion and analysis of the Trevor Bolling.
Yeah, okay.
You'd like to know anything else we are doing, correct?
Ma'am.
And you'd like a report on bullying?
Ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, but I think it's on the ninth. We're gonna try and combine it to the twelfth. We're gonna try and combine it since we're already gonna be meeting on the twelfth.
Yeah, we have.
But I'll have to ask the board and see what they think.
The next meeting.
Just, I just need to know when.
At the next meeting.
Yeah, we can do that.
Next meeting.
The tent.
Sounds good.
I'll be here yet.
And more specifically too, is I would like to peel back and look at all funding in our college readiness bucket. That's basically what I wanna see, because if we have any maneuver, it's gonna be understanding fully what that initiative looks like. And obviously still, the testing, paying for SAT tests for juniors would be part of that strategy that we can incorporate. I only have a few, and then I'll yield to my colleagues to ask additional questions. One is related to our transportation. I think it falls under, actually, Ms. Elizondo, it's the buses, the one point two million we're paying for a bus loan.
Thank you. From last year.
Yeah, but we're continuously paying. How many years are we paying on that? Is it five?
The ones that we buy, every five, every year.
We're gonna do it as a five-year note originally. We're almost finished making the notes. I think, I think the next four year, the year after, we're gonna do it.
So it's one point two, and it increases it a little bit each year, but it's only a four or five-year deal, and then we're...
That's right. Right. And two more years, we'll be done. If we don't get any loans, we'll be doing that one point four million, one point five.
And right now, we're pulling it from the N O then. That's what we're pulling the funds for, to pay for that. Yeah, it's, I remember it was under Ms. Elizondo, it's the, it's under repay loan for bus purchase. And it's a one point two million, but I've noticed it's been three years. We've been paying one point two something. So I want kind of, so we only have maybe one or two more years than you're thinking on that. And then we can, it'll be done with.
We'll buy new buses.
Right, we have to buy.
Sorry, we'll buy new buses. Then we're gonna have to buy new buses again and have a five-year note, not a four-point-two?
We'll get to pay cash.
The ones we just purchased right now, the way we decide is if we do the evaluation, right, we figure out how much we're earning in interest when the money's invested versus how much money we can borrow, how much it's gonna cost the interest of borrowing. So we decide, okay, is it better for us if we just pay it cash? We're not making very much interest. Or is it better for us to borrow the money and pay the interest on the borrowed money, because we're actually investing our money at a higher interest rate, and it's better for us that way?
Yeah.
In the past, that's what was happening. If we could invest the money at a higher interest rate than what it was costing us to borrow the money, so we would win that. The last bus we just did right now, it was better for us if we just go ahead and pay them, you know, because the interest rates aren't there. We're not getting anything on our investments. And so we just have to just go along with it.
And I think my last one was to Ms. Howard. Ms. Howard, you probably have provided this and given me, because I haven't had a chance, been doing the other budget analysis. But have recommendations for salary increases and all that been incorporated and given to the board already? Do I have that data somewhere?
Yes.
Okay, I see. And I guess what I'm looking for is we got a nice breakdown, not in this one, but like, like this. So it was, it was where we had the classifications and...
Oh, you're asking about compensation.
Yes, compensation. That's what I'm looking for specifically. And I can see it here, but I mean, you could have said that it, I've been...
I've said this multiple times.
Okay.
But I can't, it will reflect increases that were approved, but ultimately there will be a whole approval process for access to the best of the policies.
And I know that we've had some discussions about stipends and all of that. I don't think last year we tabled the stipends. We did nothing with them. Is that the recommendation this year again to...
Actually, no, sir. If you're looking at the pages, the question, fourteen forward, there will be a request to implement tougher stipends at the...
Okay. And I just need to do my homework on that part of it. So I mean, I'm just, I'm asking just because I...
We'll come back, won't we?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Because legal is here.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a lot of questions.
Yeah.
Sorry, taking your time.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and go into executive session. Item four. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
No, I got that question.
I mean, it's the principals. That's all that's on there.
And the personnel report. Yeah, well, we're gonna do it in executive session. No updates, but we have some that were given to us.
Okay, that's fine.
Here, on executive session. And then when we come back, we can do that. Yeah, I was going to do that.
Yeah, they can do it, though. I got it, I got it.
Same as last word.
I made those decisions, I got it.
Yeah, but, Ms. Howard has to be the personnel behind those. There might be some questions.
But not yet. We're going first, right?
Yes.
It's in closed session. It is listed in there too.
Yeah, it's listed in there.
Discussing personnel.
Personnel, yeah, discussing personnel.
And discussing with our districts.
Yeah. Okay, under closed session pursuant to Texas government code section five-five-one-zero-seven-four, private consultation with board's attorney, and under section five-five-one-zero-seven-four, discussing personnel. So therefore, we will be going into executive session at seven o'clock. There will be no votes while in executive session. Okay, we need this, sir? Back from...
Nowhere.
Except closed session, no vote was taken while the, on closed session?
We'll hang ten though.
We are back at eight nineteen. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the personnel report as discussed in closed session. To include updates.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Everybody's here, right?
Yeah.
All those in favor of the...
Wait, wait.
Oh.
I have a, I have a move, I have a motion for an amendment.
Oh, okay, ma'am.
I move to amend the motion to exclude the, um, principles as discussed in closed session.
Second.
Okay, we have a amendment and a second by Mr. LaFoy. Vote on the amendment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
One abstention. So, motion, I mean amendment carries. Now, we're gonna vote on the motion with the amendment.
Right.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion with the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion.
Very good.
We're going to finish the, by the way, we're going to finish the budget. We're discussing the budget. Any, and I believe anybody, I don't know if anybody had a question, but we are going to meet for the budget, Jackie, on April, I mean, June the ninth. Okay? We are gonna proceed with June the ninth. Nancy, it's not gonna be on the twelfth, it'll be on the ninth. The twelfth is just gonna be the due date.
Okay.
So, okay, yes, go ahead, ma'am.
I did have one for Ms. Elizondo. Can you give us a nine-nine-nine for the money for board election under, I'm still leaving under seven oh two? Thank you, Doctor.
Uh, yeah, yeah. We, we wanna make...
Wait, wait, she's asking.
She already, huh? Yes, on the bud... Yeah, well, go ahead. Okay. Well, I wanted to put on there that Mr. Salinas is applying for leadership and that we put the, what, two thousand dollars there in case he's selected, and if not, it goes back to the general fund.
And basically, it might be, I won't...
He'll ask for scholarship on it too.
Right, I've asked for a scholarship budget. And my budget anyway is gonna have over two thousand left from the last year. So is that okay to the board? Yes.
Yes, to, to the board, yes.
Okay, is that what I can do?
Yes.
Okay, going down, I just wanna make a note. I know I'm a board to note it. And I might have missed it since I was five minutes in. But eight oh nine, athletic department, we gave them an increase of twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars. So their budget is eight hundred and nine thousand, one hundred and four.
Correct.
And while we're taking money from these other areas, we raised the athletic department. I have a problem with that, in my opinion.
I don't know what we need it for.
Eight oh nine.
Went up twenty-nine thousand, page nine.
Went up twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Eight oh nine.
Free agents.
It's under, Dr. Mackey, eight oh nine, athletic department.
Yeah.
It's always a health and boundaries thing, I know.
Yeah, I know.
Twenty-nine thousand.
Wait, twenty thousand is what?
We can take it away and give them, take insurance away from them if you don't want to have, Mr. Derry.
You gotta have insurance.
I wanna know.
Don't even say that.
No, you just told me twenty, that was another one. Twenty thousand out of eight hundred nine. What's the rest of the money for?
No, out of the, out of the twenty-nine.
I understand. But I still, everybody else was decreased. So even if we don't talk about the twenty-nine thousand, we're still giving the athletic department...
Nine thousand.
Nine thousand dollars.
No, eight hundred and nine thousand, one hundred and four dollars.
What's that, an increase from last year?
Twenty-nine thousand.
It's nine thousand, but I'm not concerned about the increase from last year. We cut educational monies. And I'm not talking about you, Ms. Elizondo. No, no, you're just the person that handles the numbers. But I'm, I'm, I want the board to look at that because that's important.
That's not the final cut. I mean, we're, we're still, you notice we went from four million to twenty, to twenty, twenty-four million. I'm still, they get a chance to do their part first. And they do that. Then I come in and start cutting at the last cut. Every year, we've always balanced this budget. I come in and give them an opportunity to do it now. And as we get closer to it, I will have some different, we have some different figures.
And even though I jokingly said, raise the ticket, unjokingly, hey, everybody in this community loves the ball. Maybe we need to raise the price of tickets.
Make a motion, Mr. Derry. We got it.
I'll do it.
Hold on.
I don't care.
Hold on.
I just wanted to look there at the moment. I'll make those kind of comments about we're cutting the education program. When you look at bottom line, we increased the budget by one point one million dollars. Most of that is going to the education program.
I don't know if I would agree. Most of it should bring me to my, my next line, which would be...
The step program is three hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars.
You know that other sheet, would you give us? The one that has how much goes to instruction per pupil, blah, 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 that one? That's a really good sheet to look at, to see. So when this comes out in the end, that's what I'm gonna look at. But my second start item is the police department. Remember, this is not salaries. Two hundred and sixty-nine, two eighty-nine, and we cut them by nine thousand dollars. We reduced their budget. And all I'm saying is, those are not two priorities for June of there. I'm not speaking for the board. I'm not speaking for Justin District. I'm saying we're spending a lot of money there. And even though we made fun of our civilo during the way with the police department, they're doing pretty good. I rest my case.
You think they're doing good?
I talk to them.
Well, I talk to them.
I talk to them too.
Yeah, I talk to them too.
Their parents are perfectly happy.
Well, of course, they're gonna be happy. Our parents are happy too, because we have good safety in our district. For our kids, not for the parents, for our kids. Okay, next. Yes, sir.
I'd like to know when we meet on the ninth, how close will be, will we be to being there?
He's not a magician.
Well, I mean, he's...
They keep saying we're making cuts.
We're making cuts, we're making cuts. I wanna hear, where do you think we'll be as far as the...
My opinion, in my opinion, okay?
Yeah.
We're almost there. We're gonna, was a woman coming, Dr. Nigel? If we do it by the ninth, we should present what we feel is the fight that we're gonna propose, and then that would certainly all agree, or watch the...
Okay.
Two thousand here and there.
Yeah, no, I understand. That's what I wanna hear. I wanna know where we'll be. Because I mean, we can come here and talk all night and, you know, say we're gonna be back on it.
Well, I appreciate Ms. Robinson sharing specifically that although we see major cuts in areas that we're thinking out of the box and we're gonna fund what we need to fund just in a different manner. And that there isn't gonna be anything shorted, whether it's supplies or audiovisual, whatever, that our students are still gonna have what they need. So that's very reassuring to me, because I was gonna ask you, what are we gonna do?
Okay, anything else on the funding? I think we'll be able to do one more item.
What was that first, I guess?
Any, any other question right now? I mean, we'll come back again on the ninth, but I'm saying, right now, do you have anything else? Oh, I know, I've got one. I'm sorry. While you're looking, sir, Dr. Mackey, there was on seven twenty-six, tell me what's effective practice U I L competition one nineteen? One nineteen, five hundred? A hundred and nineteen thousand by hundred?
The majority of that is seventy-five thousand dollars that y'all requested from the budget for the internal audit.
Right. Oh, okay, it's under there. Okay, okay.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
The other forty thousand dollars that are in there, forty thousand dollars, you probably would be U I L trips.
Correct.
Those schools would be expensive.
Okay.
And the twenty thousand dollars, if Dr. Mackey goes to a school, another school should see some program that you would apply there.
Correct. Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, anybody else? Yes, sir?
I would like to actually have a separate line item to separate that, because it was misleading initially, the U I L and effective practices. So that seventy-five thousand is set aside for internal audit. Yeah, just, just to have a separate line item on that. And then also, I guess we need to just discuss the additions to the budget, the twenty-fourteen budget addition reduction list, draft. We hadn't had a discussion on that part of it, so...
Question.
Yes, sir.
Page fourteen?
Yeah, page fourteen, minus page two. Let's see where it started. So the total cost is three point six nine one. Director of Risk Management is a new position. We don't have a Director of Risk Management at the present time.
Where, where are you looking at?
Page fifteen now.
I know what you're looking, but I'm...
Human, under human resources.
And how many more drafts you think we might see, Ms. Howard, on this part of it?
We're gonna have it closed on the ninth.
Okay. That's it. I hope just to have it closed by the...
I have a question on, where it says, human resources, eighty thousand. You're not cutting, are you? Yeah, oh, okay, good. You're gonna have more personnel there? You're gonna have more personnel there, or?
That would be for the, for the Director of Risk Management to oversee, um, our, well, our risks, our liabilities for the strong, and all the insurance, but then they would also listen to the responsibility for all of the other districts, the property and whatnot. Um, there obviously definitely-
It's more like an eighty-two.
When we went through the reductions, we lost, um, a position that was acting somewhat.
Right, right. Okay, and, and any other one that you're gonna need, or, or?
How?
I, I wanna make sure, because I, I think human resources are being shorted, shorted. So I wanna make sure that you're gonna have-
How are we set? How are we set with this Obamacare in there? You know, if you have so many substitutes working so many hours, are we monitoring that, in such a way?
We are, and we are going to have to discuss at some point, um, our response to it. Basically, we can do a couple of things, we can bring them all on board.
Yeah, no.
We could, um, limit how many hours a day they work in this year.
But we have to have somebody closely watching that, because, you know, with all the substitutes-
And I do have a clerk position that does monitor that, Dr. Black also oversees the program. I have, because we know that becoming, have been generating and having, uh, reviews of the data, the reports, data to determine, um, how many of our subs would actually qualify. Um, and some of the things that we are going, we're in the process of considering to present to you as options. I can tell you right now, school districts, they don't know what they're gonna do. Um, I've met with all of my colleagues in, in the city, and they're all kind of waiting for somebody to come up with a plan. And, um, right now, we've got a couple of proposals that we're gonna do.
And that's really critical.
Well, I know, but at the same time, I think there's a danger, because the very people that we're talking about are going to have too many hours, are the dependable subs that do a good job, that the teachers want, that's why they have so many days. So are we saying we're going to, um, have less quality and use people that are not as qualified in order to limit, you know?
But then, by, by law, you're gonna have to give them insurance.
That's right.
And you're gonna have to pay for that insurance, so-
Well, which ties into the, the question I had, is so, where are we on this insurance? You said something a minute ago-
The government doesn't know what it is.
The increase, what?
We got to draw a medical care.
We're going out for bed this year?
We will.
Okay, and, and what are we going to, you know, school's gonna be out, have we had insurance meetings? Have we heard from my employees? Because this was a horrible year in Justin ISD. Um, if you were sick, you needed to meet a five thousand dollar death warrant, wasn't that what it was, Mr. Carson? Didn't you, didn't you look at the insurance stuff?
Yeah, depending on what, what plan you chose.
Right, and, and, um, I know that the board, last year, we raised the employee, or maybe the year before?
It was the year.
Okay, and so, in talking to employees, some employees said they would've rather, we would've raised the insurance because the money they got in the pay raise, they didn't get it, it got ate up because of the insurance. So we don't wanna wait till the last minute, but, you know, I'd like to hear some discussions along what we're going to do as the law and as a school district to help. And, I don't know, but the T A S B insurance, and that, and that what it is, some T A S B haven't insurance?
Uh, I think so.
That we never talk about.
But as far as, but I just want you to know that the health insurance meeting, uh, meaning the first month of the year, will be scheduled, and, uh, it's actually already scheduled, but the meeting starts about nine o'clock next week, um, it'll be on the floor. We are also, I mean, we're very aware that due to things that we have no control-
Absolutely.
Um, that we are gonna be facing increases this year, um, probably to the tune of a minimum of five percent. And that's gonna be across the board, I have no control over that, that is, no matter who's going to bid up, we are going to see an increase.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah.
Um, but I would like this year, uh, for some comparisons between us and other school districts.
Well, I can tell you that we are one of the last of their counties to see-
I know, that pays the whole thing. Yeah.
And though other districts, possibly even north of us, mean, look like they're offering three, four thousand dollars more a year in their salaries, that is completely flawed because the employees take no benefits there. So, um, you know, it's a tough decision we're gonna have to make, is it something we can continue to offer to our employees? Do we give them an additional twenty-five dollars on top of what we've already given? Um, but the reality is, is that with the impacts from the Affordable Healthcare Act, we are now going to be in a situation where we will not be able to counter what, what are being mandated by the government.
And since, and, you know, and I'm off subject, but, you know, is there any way you can also find out if, um, there's any way our employees can benefit from the healthcare act? Is there anything that we can do to?
Well, we, we are mandated through, through the law that we have to communicate to the employees, and we have done so, um, their option to go to the, um, to the exchange. This year, we didn't see enough exitists, I think people were very-
I thought the law said that they could not go to the exchange if we offered it.
They can't.
You're nodding, you're nodding, which one is what?
Yes, but they're dependent. And that's where the difference is, we, it doesn't matter with us, we completely are hundred percent.
Okay.
But what happens is that they may choose to take their independence elsewhere. And if they choose to do so, we have to let them, and we're told that. But one of the things, the issue was, this year, we didn't see enough exitists because there were so many issues with enrollment process for that, uh, for the exchange, that our employees were hesitant, the ones that tried to get out and they were, they couldn't get off, so they were coming back after the fact, and we would have to have them. So, it, it's only gonna be a time telling thing of what this year will look like. But remember, as we lose enrollment, then our premiums are going up. We have to kind of keep a happy balance there. If we bring on substitutes, this could greatly impact the way we handle health insurance, because the law, ACA says that it has to meet a certain percentage of the lowest paid employee in the district. So, that's gonna put us at a tremendous risk for the type of policies or plans that we're gonna offer.
Well, I have to, um, say, cause I always try to be real upfront, I, I won't be supporting a director position for HR. There's too many cuts and too much money out, the highest out support in funds would be what you pay at coordinator level. I don't, I know what the T A S B model said, that was before we opened up the school. We've got STEM Academy, and I looked at their numbers in the budget, and we're gonna have the high school, they were gonna have to fund a principal, VP, et cetera, et cetera. And not to say that you're not overworked and underpaid, you know, that's kinda how we do it at the cabinet level. You take on more work and more responsibility for less money. But, um, I think it's more important that we make sure that we fund schools and the things that are closely related to the child, and perhaps, um, you know, some of the clerical duties, we can get some part-time people in. Um, I noticed Mr. Elizondo never funded his accountant this year. So, you know, we might wanna see if Mr. Flores still wants that.
I think you did hire, didn't you hire someone?
Dare, we, we try to suppose that it's not what we want. We have three candidates right now that-
And I'm not complaining, we saved that money.
Boy, and just to kind of share a little bit about the ACA, that law that, uh, is really complicated, um, there are some stuff associated with that. So, we just wanna be, we're trying to make a recommendation, that we are saying we need a very skilled individual with a lot of expertise to monitor stuff, because the last thing in law is to pay a sixty thousand, or a forty thousand, or eighty thousand, then we get the proximal fees, because we're not doing what's supposed to be, for me, for parties at all. And that's one thing we're trying to minimize, is for-
There isn't anybody skilled out there right now, because it's all new.
There are a lot of people that work in the insurance industry-
Yeah.
And have been tracking this for two years, that, uh, I mean, Alamo Insurance, we are, are like, and obviously, I'm hiring with somebody that's not insurance, but, they are very well versed in this, because that's what they've been doing. So that's, that's an individual, and those people who work for those companies, they get compensated very heavily.
Oh, yeah, I've, I've been to some briefings for the ACA.
So it's gonna be very difficult to pull somebody like that, but that's, that gets quite a, it's a task for somebody that has the skill of it. To make sure that we don't end up, come back to the board saying, hey, guess what, we just got assessed an eight thousand dollar, or a hundred thousand, or two hundred thousand, fine, because we didn't do something that's supposed to be-
But don't we already have, we have an unemployment person? What, what's the per, who do you have in your office right now?
Um, well, the individuals, I handle unemployment.
I mean, you have to tell me people's names, tell me positions.
Which positions?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I have an employee services program, especially if you're over the state F and O.
F and O, okay.
And I have an additional, uh, employee specialist to oversee all of the work from the comm. Um, both of those individuals share the work with all of the benefits, but I oversee unemployment.
Okay. Sure, sure.
By hiring on somebody to do this, then we could take some of the management of all of those areas, that, the supervision of all of those areas to help identify and to reduce our risk in my ability. Um, and also to take off of me, the unemployment, um, cost of the dairy laborers and, and people outside. Um, and just, you know, to try to facilitate, really, a level that's going to protect, um, our risk. We, we don't want to be out of compliance with any of the expectations, nor do we want to incur, um, the, the taxes or the, the penalties that are gonna be, um, that we may face if an employee qualifies and doesn't take it. I mean, I don't have the time to choose every employee to find out, did you find out, did you get on the exchange?
That's not an executive director's responsibility.
But it, but it is one of these stuffs that's-
Tracking is easy. You get a program, you learn the law, and you, I mean, you don't need an eighty thousand dollar person to track, but-
But that's not all they would be doing.
Well, here's where the, here's where the problem is, Dr. Mackey. When you present us with a position, Director of Risk Management, and a salary for eighty thousand, there is nothing in anything I've received that has a job description, that has what this person's gonna do to justify the salary or the position, I just have a line.
We'll get to that, Mr. Dare, we'll get to that.
So- Yeah, but you gave it to us in the budget, so before you want me to decide on the budget, then you need to tell me, and I hate to keep picking on you now because you're leaving, but that's the only thing, that's not the only, but, that's why your positions, and if you would help everybody in cabinet, whatever school, you know what, you know what we're looking for? We wanna know what is it they're gonna do, why do you need it, and where's the money coming from? And if you have to give up a clerk, if you have one, to get this, say, well, you know, if we need to fund this, um, I, I'd rather have a higher level than a this, but you give us a line, and, you know, I know the bus, the business systems analyst, remember I asked that question? I know who answered me, maybe the last board meeting, but we need that for the budget, but I know it's to give the person their replacement, but a job description, um, what they're doing, and it's just a job, okay?
We have, we get to.
Yeah, that would, that would help us when we're trying to make these decisions.
We, we wanna have that, but when, when we say eighty thousand, you look at eighty thousand as if that's gonna be their salary. What about all the benefits in there?
That's the benefit load, that's what the benefit loads up, it's a salary at about sixty.
Okay, so, three licensed specialists in school psychology part-time, the one oh eight includes benefits.
Where, where, where are you?
At the top of the page, on fifteen.
All of the, all of the costs.
The total cost is in that figure. Okay.
And that's the source estimated, that's before we know what they're actually-
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, but, you know, I just said that until we get to the ninth, then there's gonna be some additional cuts.
Yeah, okay, alright. For now?
I, uh, again, forgive me for trying to balance the understanding of our other budget. I keep trying to remind myself, personnel is not in the other portion of the budget, so this is the personnel part of it. I'm going to recommend a creation of an internal audit department for the district. My estimated cost on it is gonna be about two hundred and fifty thousand. Granted, we still have to discuss it with the board before we decide we wanna approve that and move forward, but based on my experience with trying to bring in a consultant to do that job for us, it didn't yield the type of results we need, it's a real narrow scope. So, we'll argue that point in, in a session at some point, but just for the sake of it, a portion of that, uh, budget's gonna have to come out of HR, or come out of human resources, not HR department, but other department. Not only if it would be, uh, finance, or, or, it would just be independent department. Mind you, I'm not an expert, so. But, I'm going, I'm going to want to have at least that put into this matrix. So, there'll be a cost on the other side, it's not HR, for internal audit, then there'll be a request for two personnel, um, a director level type of position, and, uh, someone to support that individual. So it's two-person departments to start off, and my guess is two fifty for all of it. But again, some of that's gonna go towards resources, office space, that kind of stuff. And then the other components will be just a two-staffing. And there's a lot of information out there already on what those salary ranges would be, but I think it's time to pull the trigger on that and, and put that in there. So I wanted to give you that estimate, because you can kind of put it in here, and we'll vote formally on it, or discuss or remove it, if, if I don't have support of my colleagues. But, uh, that's just my, my two cents.
That's up to the board, if the board wanted in there, we put it in there, that's, that's up to the board.
Well, obviously, to further discuss and then-
Y'all tell us, whenever y'all, y'all, y'all vote on it, we put it in there.
Anything else we're gonna take out?
Well, we'll discuss, it'll be in there, it'll be a surplus if that's ever-
Okay, uh, can we do the art for you, so we can go ahead and, because she gave us, Nancy sent us the information, and, and hopefully, uh, let's see. Everybody should've gotten, uh, the Art Career Comparison K through twelve. Uh, I like the idea that, uh, thank you, Ms. Robinson, you compared all these school districts, so we could get an idea.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Williams?
Sure, well, I know this has gotten bumped a couple times, but we were waiting for the comparison, and I really appreciate it, too. And if you look at the comparison, you really can see, there's a lot of different, a lot of different things out there, for sure. But some of the districts, too, that, you know, are, are, are doing real well, they do have art, that's still a big thing in there. But my biggest question, you know, we did the beginning parts of what you were provided, to have high school and middle school, and the programs there are phenomenal, there's no question about that, really, my concern is elementary. And even right here at List, and it says all schools provide opportunities for involvement in visual arts, but, I, my more specific question is what opportunities? And as a parent to three elementary students, I, that's still my question, is what are we really providing? And then, on the back, you know, you have recommendations to improve, and it says that you're investigating different school districts, and what has art, and, you know, you, I know you guys have looked into, um, curriculums, but we've been saying this since we got rid of art several years ago, and I still don't see changes. Nothing's, you know, since we made those changes, middle school and high school are still doing phenomenal, as far as I can see, but we really have not implemented or made changes at elementary. And I think that it's, it's unfortunate, cause I think we're gonna see, as these kids get older, we're gonna see more effects as they're entering middle school and high school without that building blocks and those first arts. So, that's my question, what are we really providing at elementary level?
Mr. Wick, can you talk, talk on that, right there?
Okay.
Well, the biggest thing is to start starting in January, uh, in terms of looking at all of the programs. Um, and, and I know art, I wish art is, is how I, I think to address, in terms of art. Uh, the biggest thing is that is really hurting us right now, is that the attention's going to the new teach, that all the school districts are, are not, they're redoing everything. Uh, I have learned, I have talked with the, the president of the Division of Arts, the Education Association, and most of the school districts are on a hold right now, because the teach for the art part are not implemented, if you value the physicality, um, and, and to a point, that's it. Also, there's going to be an adoption at that, at that same year. Uh, and so, but that, everybody's kind of on hold. The, the, what you will see in the comparisons, is, is you see all school districts that have like really small, they have it.
And some big ones.
And Northeast ISD is, uh, really the only one, um, in our county that has it, in the North East ISD. They also have visual arts representatives. Um, I met with, uh, this woman in New York, who's a visual arts professor in ISD, and she just also came by and evaluated our art show, to be honest, with, uh, for the business.
I was there, yep, I was there. I was there, yep, I was there.
And she actually made a comment to me that our art exhibition is better than Northeast I S D. And, and so, and I was, I was impressed with that. And so, but what we're really looking at is during this, is giving teachers more of a, more professional development, so where they can integrate that, and show them how easy it is. And we're making a ready to start that in August, and so, and we'll bring all the teachers back. And then we're looking at, 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 I'm also in contact with the Texas Arts Department, and the Navy is finding out the resources that they're, that are really easy for core teachers to present art, and how easily to get that together in their curriculum.
And I appreciate, and, but looking down through this, too, there are districts that say no, they don't have elementary art teachers, you know, for, you know, per school is what it looks like. But if you look right next to that column, the number of elementary art teachers, some of them, actually quite a few that say no, still have one or two elementary art teachers.
Follow it, follow it down there.
Oh, yeah, no, I did, but.
And, and, and what that is, is they have designated, for some of the schools that stay at designated, in final condition, and has those.
A visual arts?
Perfect.
Visual arts?
No, they, they find, and for most of the schools that present, they are, if they have art teachers, they are, are, did, has those teachers, they're requesting them to teach. And also, the ones that do have a couple, like San Antonio has, like, I think, two.
Two.
But those are their, their special academies.
That's a bond academy.
That, that are, and they go, and those special academies that have it. So the ones that have a few are very, they're year-round schools, or they're special academies that they have those teachers.
Yeah, and I'm just curious, I mean, I think the whole board, I think everybody here knows that if we had the money, I mean, I'd want an art teacher, an elementary art teacher on every single campus, and I think everybody would agree if we had the money. Right, but I guess, and, and short of that, and not having that money, if there's, you know, a way to focus more, you know, and your job is a, is a very extensive job, and it covers across all age levels. And, you know, I appreciate very much that the year that the board supported just even half the art teachers, and it kept it on, and every other week, I'm not even necessarily proposing that, but there's got to be some way we can have a staff member, a couple of staff members in place to help coordinate for elementary art. Because I think that your job, you've got so much other stuff going on, and I do understand we've got teaks, and we've got some stuff where we're in limbo, I get that. But in the meantime, some fundamental arts have not changed, and they will not change, and I, I think that our kids were doing them a disservice. So that's why I would like to know, how can we implement more help to you, you know, to provide more help at the elementary level?
Well, I'm looking, I'm trying to gather as much information as I can from, from all of my art friends, my colleagues that I have, to find how, how would be the best way to, to apply that on this school. They don't use specific grades, they have, they dedicate each elementary of a core teacher. And I'm looking at that plan, I'm looking at those plans from.
And they created a website so the lessons are on there, so the core teacher can click, and it'll be timed.
And that's one thing that I was looking, I've been looking at, is that, that, as the summer, if I, if I had time, I'm gonna try to sell the website for the fine art kids, that where teachers can go on special art, and then, if all these different, the website. So where, I found the, uh, central visual record, I printed it today, and, and there was a massive amount of evaluation that we're looking at, and providing services for those elementary teachers. And hopefully by that time, I can get it, and I can get a group of teachers that reach out at elementary, and we will teach those people how to, then, give that recommendation. So that teacher would then have one person that you have each grade, like, that, that, and show them, it's like, click, click, and it's like, a how.
And I, yeah, and I'm excited for the resources, I guess I'm still just a little bit frustrated or skeptical, even because the last year, at the same time, we talked about, you know, paying retired art teachers, people that even worked for us to develop lesson plans. And there's some, I've talked to one in particular that went out and made lesson plans, but then when it came time to actually making it happen to purchase those from her, it just didn't work out. And so this person was frustrated that they've worked in our district, they're retired, they spent lots and lots of hours on these projects, and we were all excited for them, and then it didn't work out. So that's why I just wanna make sure there's resources and follow through.
Retired people don't have the teaks.
True, true, yeah.
And it was over a couple hundred of lessons, of lessons.
That's what they wanted to be paid?
And it would have had the old teak.
Sure, and I guess.
I haven't seen it. So that's the old teak, so we chose, that's not wise for us right now. Northeast has its website, and they have the liaisons from each school. We'd like to purchase art, right, and when the school district, like, we're trying to have many large, when they get it rewritten for the teaks, they'd be lonely, so it's just nobody has one, because the teaks are completely different.
Ms., you had a question, huh?
Yes, and that was just exactly what he was saying, because when you look up here, it had no in the question marks, so just for clarity, it didn't refer us to the bottom, and so it took me a minute to see what the no question mark went to the line below. So when she was saying it showed the teachers, from what I can see out of all the schools that you checked on, Mr. Wick, the Northeast program appears to be the most efficient one in that each principal designates one core teacher as art coordinator for that elementary school. The rest of that doesn't apply to us, we don't have a year-round campus, and so, and then if you can buy it from them when they're ready, but in the meantime.
Northeast doesn't write it. Northeast doesn't have the art teachers that say no, but they have these beautiful websites, and she agreed to help us.
Yeah, so if you can give us an update by the time school starts, I'm sure that'll make Ms. Williams really excited on what we're gonna do for this coming school year.
I have an active plan.
Good. Okay, anybody else? Okay, at this time, I think we're going to go ahead and leave the rest for the next one, which is June what?
The ninth.
June the ninth at six o'clock?
Yes.
Board, is that okay, six o'clock better, instead of waiting till six thirty?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. We appreciate your participation.